Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note that trustee Wanda White will be joining us via video conference this evening. Trustee McDonough?
Present.
Trustee Maribel?
Present.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Middleton?
Present.
Trustee Njenga?
Here.
Trustee White? Is she on mute?
Is she here? Trustee White?
Trustee White? She's on mute.
Yes, on mute, your mic, please?
Present.
Trustee Kerwin?
Present.
Trustee Kelly? And President Saunders?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and the organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Ward. Ms. Ward? Erica Rivera? Erica Rivera? Vanessa Jenkins? Vanessa Jenkins? Ariana Aguilar?
Here, present.
You can come up to the podium.
I'm Dr. Smith and Board of Trustees and all other guests and families and members of the community present. My name is Ariana Aguilar, and I am the parent of two scholars from Mount Vernon Honor Academy, formerly known as Homeschool, and a member of the school's PTA. I requested to speak tonight because my family and other families from Honor Academy are greatly concerned, surprised, and distressed by the news about the possible closures of three schools, including Honor Academy. I am concerned that parents were not advised of this possibility and brought into the conversation sooner, considering that there was a sense that there could be closures a few years ago, as mentioned at the last town hall. Honor Academy has been a part of my family's life for the past nine years. We appreciate the connections and support we have made and received from the teachers, administrators, and other families. I appreciate the open green space that the school has, its fields, which has allowed the school to host Field Day and district events. The PTA has sponsored events such as outdoor movie nights, Easter egg hunts, and the field was a sanctuary to my family and other families during COVID. Not all schools within the district have a field. I've met families who have moved to our area or transferred to the school because of the positive reputation that Mount Vernon Honor Academy has, which is a testament to our principal and the teaching staff and support staff, some who are alumni of Homeschool or attended school in the district as children themselves. In the initial email that went out to families about the reorganization and school closures, I see that the schools listed to close may be considered marketable property, but we urge the district to consider the value they have in our communities, to consider what our community or other people thinking of moving to Mount Vernon can get from these schools, including Honor Academy, such as a supportive environment, classrooms that are not overcrowded, and open green space compared to schools in the Bronx and other parts of NYC. In the last two town halls, it has been continually stated, when people have complained about the school's closing, that nothing has been decided, yet every proposal includes the closing of three schools. So I ask, what are the potential options to actually save our schools? What needs to be done to keep schools open? Also, many families are concerned about the process being rushed and to the detriment of our school district and families wanting to stay in the district. I'm concerned about families, including myself, my own family, finding themselves scrambling to figure out school arrangements for the next year, especially if they have children in different grades, and I have a son in seventh grade. And this includes families who travel by public transportation. We would like to request more time from the state to evaluate our options with our families and staff involved in the process. I would also like to request a breakdown of the repairs needed at Honor Academy, and that information pleased to be provided at the virtual meeting taking place with the school community tomorrow evening, to help our families better understand what is being considered within the possible closures. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Brenda Crump? Brenda Crump?
Cynthia Crenshaw. It was mentioned at the town hall meeting that there was talk about schools closing. If there was talk, it was in the regular backroom meeting and never discussed in front of the public. However, about five years ago, Dr. Hamilton suggested a proposal to make Parker the hub for all pre-K and kindergarten on the South Side. He picked Parker because it was a solid structured school and accessible for the buses was important. However, it was rejected because the North Side schools did not have a central location for this population of students, and the parents was against it. The South Side parents didn't want their children bused to various locations, but to stay in their own neighborhood. People of color has always been bused for various reasons, tired of that. Now, you all are looking to close Parker, which has a great amount of history. As you know, Cecil H. Parker was the first black teacher to teach in Mount Vernon in all of Westchester County. Good Morning America advertised on Channel 7 about a new shiny basketball court that was built at Parker in Mount Vernon due to Nestor Felix, Love of the Kids, and Parker. The following programs are currently located at Parker: volleyball, B-ball, community pickleball, and basketball. Parker has new bathrooms, new light fixtures, halls are recently painted, fairly new cafeteria, new pre-K playground, and more. The first Wednesday of June is considered Cecil H. Parker Day. The district poured money on the North Side, which has been discussed at board meetings at several times, ignoring the South Side. Is this a form of discrimination? A complete wing was added to a North Side school while ignoring the South Side. An example, Parker is 87 years old, and you're predicting 24 million. Williams is 92 years old, and you're predicting 20 million. Pennington is 93 years old, older than both schools, and you are saying 8 million. Pennington is on the North Side, and look at the amount of money being placed in the schools that is older than Parker. My point taken. Can we see what exactly is being done to the schools? What's the breakdown? You are spending our dollars, and we have a right to know. 62% of our dollars goes to the school board, 25% goes to the city, and 13% goes to the county. The majority of our tax dollars goes to the district, and the district books should be open to the public. What kind of work are you putting into these schools? There's rumors that you are keeping certain buildings open because of a friendship. Because of what's going on in Mount Vernon, friendship goes completely out the window. There's been mismanagement of our tax dollars, and maybe you should reduce the salary of this administration by 5% to help in this situation, and let us feel that we are all in this together. Thank you.
Sylvia Tyree?
Good evening, Superintendent, Board Trustees. I was at the meeting last week. You all talked about a deficit in the city. My questions to you are, and I know you're going to answer them next year, Superintendent, it was fine. You said there's a decline in our enrollment. Why is there a decline? You have two churches that you are housing, I believe, so I was told, pre-K and kindergarten. You can let me know if that's true or not. Do we pay for it? And if that's the case, and the schools are declining, bring our kids back. Why are we housing them in two churches when you're saying our schools have a decline in enrollment? You paid $10,000 to one of your lawyers, and you said the reason why you gave him the raise was because he found you a lot of money. I have yet to hear what money he found for you, and where did you spend this money? The deficit, every time you have a meeting and talking about the deficit, you talk about what the city owes you. Each time I'm hearing it, it goes from 10 million. Last week, you said it was 24 million. Y'all are now collecting the taxes. So why are we still going up, 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 saying the city owes us? Superintendent Smith, when I was at that meeting last week, they used you as an scapegoat. Every question that was asked, all they could say was Superintendent, Superintendent. And then one of the board's trustees said that you run the board. We know that's a lot of trustees run the board. They tell you what to do. You need to not let them use you as an scapegoat for all the stuff that's being wrong here and the mismanagement in this district. So please, stand up for yourself. Don't let them put all the weight on you when it's them that's telling you what to do.
Thank you. Mark Stuckey?
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Two things I would like to speak on real quick. You had a new floor put down at Denzel Washington in the auditorium. I'm asking for the board to go look at that floor. What brought this up was because Saturday, they were doing work there, and I was walking my dog. She's a lab. And I wind up noticing that the company who was doing the floorwork, Marble Flooring, parked their vehicle on the sidewalk in front of the auditorium entrance on Fifth Avenue. We don't know how strong that is pertaining to the weight of that vehicle, but I asked them, can you move the vehicle off the sidewalk? Because it can, it may, it's a possibility that it can crack the slate that's down there. They moved the vehicle away, no problems. And at the same time before he moved it, the rubber base that they was using for that flooring, they spilled some on the floor, on the ground. I asked them to clean it up. They did it. Today, I walked through the building this morning, just the auditorium. You might want to say, hey, why didn't you go through channels? I wanted to see what I wanted to see before anything. And I noticed on the staircase, if you standing on the outside of the facility of the school, on the left side of the staircase that goes into the auditorium, on the staircase, you have some foot markings with this rubber on it. Now, they need to clean that up. It's not a big dig thing there, but they need to clean it up with some acetone or whatever they use to get it up. So I continued to walk through and check the carpet to make sure there was no damage done to it. Nobody knew. Nobody knows what's taking place, because we don't have anyone to watch over those who are doing the work in this district. But the best thing about that is they come and take all our money and keep it going. So I walked the stage floor. What was the purpose of changing the flooring on that stage? The purpose was because they said the nails was popping up. Yes, it was, because a year ago, I did some repair work. All of those nails that was popping up on a Christmas program they was having there. And I took care of those issues. We spent, the district spent, good money of the taxpayers' money to do that floor. With the nails, whatever they did, is popping up out of the floor. So our children can still walk across there, do their dancing, and get cut. Once blood is shown, you got a lawsuit. Look at it, walk the floors. Not only that, but you have, if they took plywood and buttered it up to join the plywood together, it's now sinking in certain spots. If this floor was done at Carnegie Hall or Radio City, it would be flawless. You have the whipples, which is the beams that are underneath all of this, that's supposed to be straight, they'll wind up being shown. It's a horrible job. Have somebody look at it, because it doesn't make no sense for the taxpayers to spend the money. Everybody, what I'm saying, Stuckey's everywhere. No, God put me in places so I can see what's taking place, so I could wind up being the voice for my home. Okay? The next thing wind up being, you had a meeting that took place, a town hall meeting the other night, a week ago. It was disrespectful to our leader, the mayor of the city of Mount Vernon, cutting her off, getting her to get to her point, or whatever the case may be. If she's the leader and she wants to talk for an hour, she got that right. She's our leader of the city of Mount Vernon. To disrespect our leader, a woman, is disrespectful. You're fighting against each other of color. It doesn't make no sense. That's why we can't get along. We fight every time we turn around. My time is up for something, and the whole thing is, you don't want to listen to me because I don't hold a PhD, but I tell you one thing, I'm smarter than everybody who sits up here.
Thank you. Jeff Monroe?
This is the best practice application of this microphone, just so you know. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, community. I come back with some bittersweet feelings because I love being in community with my community, regardless of what we're going through. I'm here for it because I'm one with you, but I'm also, I think, in a moment of opportunity because this crisis that we're all collectively in offers, in my mind, an opportunity to retrench, to kind of retread an old tire, if you will. And I'm going to say quickly what I can in the next two and a half minutes, because I've said this before. I went to the forum last, the town hall forum last week, and I found that I'm probably one of the least informed people in the room because I've just been busy doing a lot of things, like a lot of people, including other services around the community. But as an organizer and as a media professional, I understood that you have very limited minutes in a day to communicate an idea to an audience that's, even if it's a fixed audience, a working-class audience that's there in the middle of an evening, is not going to be there all night in a hot auditorium, able to communicate their actual articulated, or even their best articulated thoughts in a hot auditorium, when they could have been informed more appropriately over time, in a kind of drip fashion, if you will, so that important aspects, key facts, can be, even in the town hall format, can be delivered in a way that was not ever going to work in a two- or three-hour, single-night fashion. I think that's a statement of the obvious, but the less obvious thing is that I've said before that we should practice the democratic practice of town hall functions, not just once a quarter or once a crisis, but actual ongoing practice where you invite people physically into a space, because we're still human beings, we're social animals, and you can enable it with Zoom and whatever other electronic devices available. But people need to be able to be considered valuable enough to bring into a physical space with each other. I think if you inform people on an ongoing basis, and you still can, and frankly, although this sounds like a critique, I'm offering it as a solution because I'm willing to help. In fact, one of my parallel questions for this is why we don't have a television production curriculum? And if we do, I'd like to know what you're actually doing with that studio and/or the other media facilities in the district. You can do a lot more than whatever the kind of instinctive propaganda inclinations might be for an official when you have media in front of you, but the community needs to be heard. You need to actually bring a mic and a camera to the community and ask them what they think of ideas when you've thought them out. You might not like what they say. They might not even say things that are "appropriate," quote-unquote, but it's the so-called democracy. You have to give it a chance at some point. This practice of kind of elitist, you know, go to your friends, go to the churches, go to your sorers and your frats, see what they say, go to corporations, it hasn't worked. It's not going to work. And quite frankly, I think this country is in a place where common people are finding that their power is best invested outside of the system, and I'm trying to give you the best, humbly, I would say sage advice, to give democracy a chance, because you don't want people trying extrajudicial, extra-legal matters to take power into their own hands. I'm an organizer, and I know what people are capable of when they're angry and desperate. I'm just advising you as a citizen and as a neighbor, and as a coworker, if you will. I'm willing to help you if you're willing to help us and help yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. John Gallagher?
My name is John Gallagher. I reside at 165 East Avonia Avenue, and I represent property owners. CPO is our original organization. I've been out of these last couple of meetings, board meetings here, and I've sat down and listened to some of the presentations given by the public. I'm here to correct some of the mistakes and misstatements that have been made here. One of the ones that was made here recently was that the city budget is $79 million. It is not $79 million. It's $148 million, and it's going to be $152, because our mayor, who has her supporters come up here and attacked the school district, is looking for about a 5% increase. I was told tonight by somebody in the controller's office that that budget may be down to 4%. So she's decreasing it by 1%. Where your money has been going, ladies and gentlemen, if you pay taxes, and if you pay them through a mortgage company or a bank, your increases have been to the city, not to the school district. We've had people come up here talking about, one plays a recording, about the 0% tax increase. But what they failed to add is that, yes, property taxes make up a big part of the revenue for a school district and municipality and whatnot, but they also get what is called state aid and federal aid. And if you go look at the records for the Mount Vernon School District, you will see that state aid has gone up significantly over the past few years. So therefore, when you look at a tax increase, you have to say to yourself, wait a minute. The rate of inflation for the last couple of years has been running about 2%. And if indeed that state aid has been increased, federal aid has been increased, we're getting grant money, which now is questionable because of the mismanagement, and let's throw that in. Let's talk about the mismanagement that is going on in previous administrations in the school district and probably people on the side of the Board of Education here. There was whistleblowers that came forth to my organization, and these people that ran for office that wanted a 0% increase, and bear in mind, what's very important to realize, is that it's not the school board that passes the budget, it's the voters. And the voters said yes to 0% increase significantly over the last few years. And meaning what we want done is we want audits done. And I talked to several people about a lot of homeowners, and the people that ran for the board the last couple of years that are in favor of audits would say to me, Mr. Gallagher, why don't we need an audit? Well, go ask yourself why the feds are in the school district right now, and they've been here for almost two years. Their investigation is active, which means something is going on, and there is reason to be here. And I'm not blaming anybody here that's sitting on the board right now, whatever. This goes back years where there's been mismanagement. So why would people, if you've got any sense in your head, say, I'm going to give you more money so that you can misspend it? No. The people that ran for the board, that I supported as homeowners groups, that are also parents, that have children in our school system, said to me, Mr. Gallagher, we want to know where our money is being spent. So before you throw more money into an organization, know where your money is being spent. And these board members that were put on, that got elected, call for audits. And once again, that's why the feds are here, and they're finding stuff out. Your concern should be very simply is, what are they going to do about it? What are they going to do about it? This mayor wants to run the school district. Well, let me tell you about what this mayor has done with tax increases and whatnot. Over 30% the last couple of years. Her new idea is to bring revenue in, bringing more marijuana shops to Mount Vernon. Oh, we really need that, don't we? She wants to increase your sales tax. She also wants to bring pilots, and they are a disaster to this community. They, I'll wrap up very quickly. The developers of these pilots do not pay taxes. They pay payment in lieu of taxes, and it's very minimal, but they wind up sending 30 or more kids to our school district, which costs us tons of money, taxpayers. And by the way, your assessed values have gone down in this city, a result of our mayor and the administration. Just bear that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. And that ends our public comments for this evening. Superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. We have two presentations tonight. We will start with Dr. Gail White Wallace. She will be presenting on the universal pre-kindergarten. Dr. Gail White Wallace? This will be followed by Capital Markets.
Come on, we got to lighten up this room. Come on, y'all. You hear the children? I know I can be what I want to be. If I work hard at it, I go where I want to be. Thank you, Oscar. All right, everyone. Good evening. I had to lighten it up in here a little bit. For those of you who do not know me, I am the class of 1997, Mount Vernon High School, and I'm also the proud director of the pre-K program, the GNT program, and in my words, all things fabulous here in the District of Mount Vernon. First, I want to address the board. Thank you for having me this evening. My colleagues on the dais, my staff, could all the pre-K staff who are here tonight, please stand up? Y'all better make some noise. Thank you. To my colleagues, I see Dr. Waterman in the front, to, there's some parents here today that I've had the pleasure of interacting with, also our parent liaisons and the community. So today, we're going to talk a little bit, not about restructuring. I want everybody to put that on the back burner. We're going to talk about something that's very important to any system, that is taking advantage of the milestone. Tonight, we're going to talk about why the ages of 3.5 to 5 are the most important years of any student in this district scientifically, physiologically, and emotionally. Then we're going to talk about how the district, over the last five years, has capitalized on the milestone. Next slide, Oscar. I'm not working. I'm not working. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with developmental milestones, we know that when a child is from birth to five years old, they have the most cognitive and intellectual growth that they will ever have in their entire lifespan. So what does that mean for the Mount Vernon City School District? That means this is the time to harness our learners. Next slide. This is the time to create the foundation so that they can be successful at STEAM, so they can dance across that floor at Denzel, and so that they can master fixing that car or being a chef at the Mount Vernon High School CTE program. At this time, from 3.5 to 5, this is where our students begin to develop educational understanding to give them a foundation. It also provides them with the practice they need for fine motor skills. In addition, self-regulation, getting rid and reducing tantrums, understanding how to harness your emotions, and most of all, social and language skills. Next slide. Next slide. This is more than instruction. This is a moral imperative. Not only are we, as a district, instructing students for their physiological, psychological, and educational and social growth, but we are also reinvesting into the city of Mount Vernon. Because what you don't realize is students that are in early childhood programs such as pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 allow parents, such as myself, to go back to work. It allows families to earn and thus pay their taxes, and thus continue the cycle of fiduciary responsibility to their city. In addition, the moral imperative of our early childhood program ensures that the city of Mount Vernon continues to have a strong legacy. The long-term effects are measurable, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we go through the presentation. Next slide. Now, early childhood programs, there are many. But the key for the Mount Vernon City School District is that it is a quality program. On your screen, you're going to see about 12 indicators of what a quality program consists of. All of our teachers are certified, most of them duly certified. All of our staff in our CBOs, except for one staff member, has a full New York State certification. Those in community-based organizations are working with me to get their child development credentials from New York State. We provide more than 15 hours of high-quality professional development. We continue to maintain the ratio of 18 students and two teachers. We provide meals. We provide instruction. We provide iPads. We provide even the materials to make sure that we remove every barrier for students. That includes clothing students, that includes school supplies, that also includes, starting January 21st, aftercare. Thank you, Dr. Doggett. Next slide. So how do we know that it's high quality? We surveyed our customers. Last year, 80% of the pre-K parents completed our end-of-the-year survey, and the data speaks for itself. How do we know it's high quality? The proof is in the parents. The parents gave us 4.84 stars out of 5 stars overall in our program. 95% of the parents believed their children were ready for pre-, for kindergarten. 87%, and I need y'all to look at that number, 87% believed our family program was exceptional or good. That means, out of the 408 students I had enrolled, 87% of the parents engaged in one or more after-evening or weekend item with their children. No other department has that type of parent engagement. Last but not least, to my staff, 97% of the parents who took the survey expressed they were happy and received regular communication about their child's progress. Next slide. So what does high quality mean for the milestone in Mount Vernon? We have literacy instruction, math instruction, and technology that are all thematically integrated. If anybody understands early childhood education and making sure students meet the mark, it must be interdisciplinary. From the ELA themes, social studies, science, they are all webbed together to ensure that we are scaffolding for students and providing them with background knowledge. Next slide. Literacy instruction is vertically articulated to the K through 2 continuum with the implementation of foundations in all classrooms. We also use not only synthetics, but we also use letter people, letter of the week, sight words, readers, and songs. Last year, we graduated 20% of our students that were reading on kindergarten level already that came in without letter name knowledge. In order to reach all of our students, we have small group instruction, as well as center practice and Watersford online learning. Next slide. And of course, Trustee Kelly is not here. Now, y'all knew this slide was for her. The science of reading slide. I put, I gotta call her. So the science of reading is the hot topic right now. And what we've done in this slide is just shown that we are being very deliberate to correlate the work that we're doing in the classroom to the requirements of the science of reading. Next slide. Take a look at my babies. Oh my, Ms. D., you see yourself up there, girl? All right. So what you're seeing right there are students engaging with readers. You see students writing letters and engaging in some literacy small group and whole group instruction. Next slide. Our mathematics instruction makes Dr. Jagnandan very proud as we provide core instruction, but also ensure that we're giving tiered small group and manipulative instruction to students. There's some small group math. Aren't those students cute? And they're smart, and they're working so hard at their counting, their one-to-one correspondence. And by the end of the year, we're doing word problems, addition, and subtraction. Next slide. Our program design is one that is unique in the district because of the importance of the milestone. We begin with family involvement, monthly workshops. We visit homes. We have counseling support and CPSC support. We then couple that with social-emotional development, giving direct lessons and implementing research-based second-step curriculum. We have collaborative culminating projects, and you guys know I'm the director of all parties and all things fabulous. So you know, in pre-K, we are partying every month. We are celebrating every month. And if you stop by the classrooms this week, you will see our Polar Express, where children are building life-size trains to watch the Polar Express movie and engage in a plethora of activities. And finally, immersive experiences, cooking, building, and of course, tons of trips. We could not do this without the parents because this milestone has to be supported with a very clean and strong family involvement. This is our first VIP day this year. It's called Very Important Person. You may not have a quote-unquote dad, quote-unquote mom, but you have a person that's important to you. And in each school, we had a VIP day where parents came to hang out with us, and they also articulate with our social workers. Next slide. Our social workers and our teachers ensure that students are getting all the social and emotional development support that is needed through whole class, group counseling, and individual counseling. What I love the best about our program is how we support and do behavior modifications at home when needing, needed, and provide parents with the resources that they may need. Here are just some pictures of our children. Ms. Eleanor, you see yourself up there, girl? All right. Next slide. Partnerships. So, Dr. Smith, is it okay if I address the question about the schools in the churches? Okay. So I'm going to address that. Next slide. So yes, we have two programs in two churches that are required by the state. So when you receive pre-K grant money, you are required to employ community-based organizations to provide instructions to students. Those community-based organizations are chosen by RFP, which happens every five years on a cycle. There are two providers, Friendship for Tots, who service the Lincoln and Home students because Lincoln School does not have pre-K, as well as Our Lady of Victory, who service Grimes School because Grimes does not have pre-K, Hamilton School, which does not have pre-K, and the spillover for Mandela and Columbus because they are always full within one month of registration. So we are able to fill all of our classes using the support of our community-based organizations. Please note that pre-K requires specialized classrooms, so just because there's room does not mean the classrooms are 900 square feet, have regulation bathrooms, and have egresses outside to exit the building. Friendship for Tots and Our Lady of Victory mirror all of the programs that we have in the district. Here are some pictures from Friendship for Tots and some of the activities that they Our Lady of Victory, located on the west side, also provides the same instruction. We make sure that we provide professional development to those CBOs that we do to our teaching staff. Partnerships in the community. We don't do this alone. The Family Services of Westchester provides clinical support in conjunction with us. Iona University helps us with social work interns. And for our students who are not eating healthy, who's the chair of the Health and Wellness Committee up here on the table? Warren, is that you? We do five sessions with Feeding Westchester for our students who don't eat well. We do cooking classes with them and their families to get them to eat healthy. Feeding Westchester also helps us feed our students and gives us donations of food for those children who need food and groceries at home. The Pajama Program, our newest program, where, yes, we sleep train children in pre-K. Do you know that pre-K students are up to 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning on iPads when parents are sleeping? 13% of our students do not get enough sleep per night. So we are partnering with the Pajama Program and doing sleep training for those students and those families. Almost done. Let's talk about how all of these things have impacted the most important milestone for our students in Mount Vernon. Take a look at your data from last academic year. Look at those numbers. Look at the end of the year. 93% students letter naming, 82% letter sound, 70% counting, and that's not 1 to 10, that is 1 to 50. Shapes, 85% proficiency. Number discrimination, 95% proficiency. Counting sets of numbers, 88%. Operations, which is a kindergarten skill, addition and subtraction, 79% of enrolled students. Number naming, 80%. And story, retelling, comprehension are 90% by graduation by the third week of June. This is our current enrollment, 410 students, 23 classrooms, and we're still registering. Last but not least, why this milestone is so important. I've been working in this district for 22 years. I have taught at six schools. I've had seven different positions, and I am awestruck to watch four-year-olds come to us with the following issues. No toileting, no potty training, deficiency in speech and language, behavior challenges, excessive tantrums, struggle socializing and playing, fine motor deficits, and low understanding. There are children who come to us in September who have never seen a book, but they know what an iPad is. And the data shows, take a look at your screening data, the blue are students who are at a correct developmental level. The yellow, the gray, and the orange represents all the students who are not meeting their developmental milestones. And most of that lies in speech and language because they're not talking, they're not having conversations, and fine motor because they swipe, they don't write. So when they come to us in pre-K, I'm guaranteeing that that milestone, all of those things are developed because we put pens and pencils and crayons and paint in their hand and puzzles in their hands and books in their hands from day one. This is our data. I want you guys to have this in your head because I'm coming back at the end of the year. So you see where our students have started as of October 1st. 0% letter sounds, 50% letter naming. We're going to move all those bars up. Our goal this year is a minimum of 80% in every single area. And how are we doing this? Partnership, partnering with the parents. During parent-teacher conference night, we meet with every parent, and we create a goals and improvement form that they must sign. We also provide a planned home for every single student. We have Saturday Academy for students, as well as monthly family workshops and regular meetings. Our goals are 80%. My goal, where we started, and Ms. Saunders, do you remember where we had 50 kids in pre-K? We are at 408. We are at 78% of students who are in kindergarten being in pre-K. The goal is 95% of the students who come to us in kindergarten to have been sitting in a pre-K classroom who are ready for kindergarten. And our long-term goals are to make sure, look at those kids at Parker, in our summer program. Our goal is to have all 90% here. Our goal is for parents not to have to choose not to come here because we're going to give them before care, we're going to give them after care, and we are going to add language immersion for our E&amp;L students. Those are our hopes and dreams. So I ask you, Mount Vernon, what are you going to do with the most important milestone in our students' life? You're going to enroll them in pre-K. And from there, we move forward to mastery, which is where our superintendent is taking us. Thank you all.
I'm ready for the questions.
Dr. Gail White Wallace, thank you once again, as always. Your energy is through the roof, and you never fail to deliver, over-deliver. Thank you. If nothing else, this presentation just totally cements the absolute necessity, the crucialness of pre-K for our children. There is no vision of education for any child without the beginning, which is pre-K. So this was very, very helpful, especially the metrics showing the outcomes and how, where we started to where we ended at the end of the, the last school year. How, I'm going to bring a question up on this situation because we know about the reorg that's happening, we've talked about it, and we know the buildings are being closed. What is going to be the impact to our pre-K? We have, as far as I know, we've been challenged with being able to cater to all the students in our district who truly need pre-K, which is why we have Friendship for Tots and OLV helping. But what are we going to do when we've got three less buildings and the pre-K? How is it going to, do we have a plan? What do you see?
So planning can't begin until we have a solid configuration, right? So once there's a determination of the configuration, and Mr. Formoso has nailed down the numbers, I could give you a clear plan. I mean, do I have a plan? Y'all know me. I got three plans, actually five. I've got five plans to really be fiscally responsible to not only the district, but also to the students. So once we have a configuration, I'm ready to rock and roll. Jose and I have had some preliminary talks, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to sugarcoat it. Little people are expensive. They're expensive. And the state mandate to ratio is really what makes it expensive. And we're going to have to work as a community and a team to make sure that we, make sure every child harnesses what happens during this milestone.
If you tell them you've got a plan, 3 through 5, I feel a lot better. Still want to see everything come to fruition. Thank you.
I got you.
Question. How many of the 408, well, first of all, I'd like to just say thank you, Dr. Gail White Wallace, on your presentation. I concur with Trustee Mitchell. How many of the 408, 410 students that are in our programs currently actually graduate or move on through our educational system to 12th grade? Do we have any of that data?
We don't. But I do have, so it's, it's so funny. The last time I did this study, the attrition rate was about 28% on average per year attrition. And unfortunately, that's, that's sort of the cycle here. And unfortunately, that's sort of the cycle here in Mount Vernon. I mean, that's something we could discuss, but it's around twenty-eight percent attrition. And there are a number of reasons when we talk to parents. One reason is parents can't afford to live in Mount Vernon. The rent is high. They just can't afford to live here. Or the conditions that they're living in, they cannot stay in those conditions in some of the buildings. So that's, those are two reasons when I talk to parents. Three, of course, you have children that go to private school. So we're accounting for those students who are going to independent schools. We also have students that are homeless. So we lose some homeless students as they get their permanent housing. We lose them also to attrition. Those are usually our top five reasons for attrition in the district.
Thank you for that information. The other question that I have is what, how much funding comes from actual grants or aid from the state or from other sources versus actual district funds?
So you're looking at approximately, last year, we were at 4.332 million from the state and I think 1.68, Jose, from general fund. Around there, something like that.
And one last question. What do you know what the research says about the reduction of pre-K programs in districts such as Mount Vernon?
So when you look at the New York State website and they do talk about allocations, right? Allocations with your state funding has really been steady and at a plateau for the last eight years. So people are really utilizing their state funds. Funding and minimizing of any program really comes on the general fund side, but you know, your places like New York City, Peekskill, Asning, Yonkers, they're still running most of their programs at the regular capacity. Programs that are reduced most times are pre-K three programs as people really believe that that is teetering in daycare versus being a school-aged child. So that would be where you would see most reductions in urban areas because you have to, you have to contract out for pre-K three because most schools are not prepared in the physical plant for those students.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Any other achievement questions, long-term? Anybody have other, any other questions? You know, I got the numbers right here.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you so much, everyone. And if I don't see you, have a happy and wonderful holiday season.
You too. Mr. Formoso, would you like to introduce our next presenters?
So tonight, we have capital market advisors. There are fiscal advisors coming to present the fiscal analysis of the school district. We are also engaged with them to do a multi-year financial plan as well. So tonight, they're just gonna present a PowerPoint based on the analysis, which goes back roughly six years for the district.
Okay, thanks. Good. Ready? Very good, thank you. And good evening, everyone. I'm Richard Tortora. I'm the President of Capital Markets Advisors. With me this evening is my colleague, Tom Vusakis, who's a Vice President with our firm. CMA is an independent financial advisor. We work with approximately 150 school districts across New York State as well as approximately 200 municipalities, counties, cities, towns, villages, via districts, et cetera. Our primary business is to assist our clients as they enter the capital markets to borrow funds to fund their construction projects, their acquisitions of equipment, et cetera, or to issue debt to fund cash flow needs. They issue tax anticipation notes in anticipation of real property tax receipts or revenue anticipation notes in anticipation of state aid. What we're here to talk to you tonight about is another part of our business, which we call strategic consulting. We have a practice that we've had for about, excuse me, about eight years where we advise clients on day-to-day activities with the intention of improving their operations, improving their efficiency, improving their effectiveness, et cetera. What we're presenting on tonight is the first step of what will be a multi-step plan to get the district in touch with its financial condition. So the fiscal conditions analysis is the first part of this multi-step process. What we did in this process is we reviewed existing audited financial data prepared by your auditors. We looked at economic and demographic data provided to us by the state, by the county, by the federal government, and we constructed an overview as to where the district has been over the last five or six years and where it is presently. And our goal is to just give you awareness of your financial condition before we engage in the second step, which will be a multi-year financial plan. So let me pass the ball to Tom Vusakis, who's gonna talk about and present the plan to you.
Thank you and good evening. As Rich mentioned, if we could go to the next slide. This fiscal conditions analysis is the first of two reports that we intend to start preparing showing where the district has been over the last several years and where it currently is as far as its fiscal condition is concerned. That would lead into a forward-looking, multi-year plan that we hope to complete in the next several months, working with the district's administration. Looking back and where the district is presently, unfortunately, shows a pretty grim financial position. The district has a recent history of running significant operating deficits on an annual basis. And that's resulted in a significant draw on the district's reserves, so much so that the district's unassigned fund balance or rainy day fund, really, has dropped to a negative position, a significant negative $5 million position, which is concerning and unsustainable on a long-term path. And what that's led to, in part, is a withdrawal of the district's credit ratings from the two major credit rating agencies, Moody's Investor Service and Standard Empor's Global Ratings. Due to a lack of financial information being provided to those rating agencies, they've withdrawn the district's credit rating. That can have significant repercussions if the district needed to access the capital markets and issue debt for capital projects, infrastructure improvements. It would have severely limited access to capital and it would be doing so at significantly increased costs. Next slide. So this is a brief overview of what the district's operations have looked like over the last six years. As you can see from that middle red row, there has been a history of operating deficits and multimillion-dollar operating deficits. On an annual basis, the district's revenues have come in under budget. The district's, some of the district's expenses have also come in under budget, but not enough to offset the lack of sustainable revenue. And again, that's led to a severe draw on the district's reserves. Next slide. So this is a little more detail about the fund balance specifically. And just to give a brief overview, the restricted reserves that you see here, those have been assigned by the district and the board for specific purposes that they've been reserved for. The assigned fund balance has also been appropriated for specific expenditures that they plan to be spent on. The unassigned is the most troubling. That's what you have in reserve to pay for any unanticipated expenditures, things that might not have been foreseen, that you wanna have ample reserve, your rainy day fund. We would expect a district of Mount Vernon's size to have somewhere closer to 20 to 30 million dollars in unassigned fund balance. That would be what we consider a healthy reserve level. It's about two months of operations. The fact that there's a negative position right now is concerning and something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. Next slide. This chart here shows the, how the district has performed compared to what was originally budgeted. So you'll see the variances in the revenue line have been consistently negative, meaning that the district has brought in less revenue than what was originally budgeted for. You'll see on the expenditure side, there have also, there have been positive variances, meaning expenditures have come in under budget, which is a good thing. However, the fact that the total variances have been positive, meaning the district's performed better than what was budgeted, but there have still been significant operating deficits is concerning. That means that there was already built into the budget, an expectation that reserve levels were gonna be drawn down on. And even if the district performed better than what was budgeted, it still needed to draw down on those reserves. So it's really relying on the fund balance and the reserves in the bank to pay for operations. And again, it's just not a sustainable practice and something that needs to be brought more in line going forward. Next slide. Thank you. And in part of that is, I think was mentioned earlier, is a decline in enrollment for the district. Over the last 10 years, the district has seen about a 20% decline in its enrollment, which is significant. And over the next 10 years, a further decline of about 20% is expected. And that can impact things like your state aid. Those revenues might decrease accordingly as a result of the declining enrollment. Part of that can be attributed to more children going to charter schools. Over the last 10 years, the charter school enrollment for district students has more than doubled. So that's part of the reason for the declining enrollment, but certainly isn't the entire reason. And as a result of all that, most of the district's buildings are significantly under capacity for, as far as how many students are being taught there. Almost all buildings have less than 50% capacity and a lot of those are probably in the 25 to 35% capacity threshold. This table here is from the district's long-term, excuse me, building condition study showing the capital infrastructure improvements that would be deemed needed to keep the buildings in working condition. The Priority One and Priority Two columns are items that might be expected to be done in the next three to five years. The Priority Three column are more long-term projects and Priority Four are considered next-generation projects, so maybe 20, 20 years plus. But even just looking at Priority One and Priority Two, it's about $46 million worth of projects there. If the district were to take on all of those, that would increase the debt load by about, by almost 50%. And for a situation where the finances are already stressed, to be able to accommodate an additional 50% of debt service would be difficult. The fiscal stress monitoring system is something that's put out by the Office of the State Comptroller. It's an assessment of a jurisdiction's financial position and really meant to be used as a warning sign for communities to let them know if they are either susceptible to fiscal stress, if they're in a stressful position already. So over the last five years, the district has been either susceptible or significantly fiscally stressed, as reported by OSC, which is something that we wouldn't typically expect from school districts. School districts have a significant amount of state aid support and a lot of resources that typically put them in a good financial position. However, Mount Vernon was considered the second-most fiscally-stressed school district in New York based on its 2023 audit. And a lot of that had to do with the low levels of cash, of liquidity, and the low reserve levels. So it really all keeps coming back to that situation where the district's low reserves are putting it at a disadvantageous position. So I mentioned earlier about the withdrawal of the major rating agencies. Moody's withdrew the district's rating in 2023, S and P earlier this year, and that was due to a lack of receipt of financial information from the district. And again, it puts the district in an unfortunate position as your cost of capital increases due to no rating. So here is just a chart showing the different rating categories that those companies have. And it's really like a, like a credit score for an individual. It's an assessment, a third-party assessment of the district's ability and willingness to pay its debt service. So it can range anywhere from AAA through AA categories, single A, and then B double A before it gets to sub-investment grade. So the district had been a B double A two and a triple B plus prior to its ratings being withdrawn, which is on the lower end, but still an investment-grade rating, which would give you access to the capital markets, to finance capital projects, to finance cash flow needs. Because those ratings have been withdrawn, it doesn't eliminate access to those markets. The district just issued a tax anticipation note not too long ago. However, it's doing so at significantly increased interest costs. And this chart is just a further illustration of that. It shows the different interest rate scales for different rated credits. So we would expect a AAA credit to be, to have the lowest interest rates associated with its debt and increasing across AA, single A, and then finally B double A. So a lack of a credit rating really puts the district even further to the right of this chart. And again, just increases the interest that would be associated on any debt that is needed to be issued. So where does the district go from here? We will be undertaking a long-term, multi-year financial plan, working with the district administration, to put together a financial forecast of where we expect the district's finances to, what we expect the district's finances to look like over the next three to five years. And what we plan to do is come up with a list of recommendations, initiatives we think could be implemented and forecast out what kind of impact those might have on the district over the next five years. So that would include a couple of different scenarios. What the district would look like if it did nothing, everything kept kinda rolling along as it is. What it would look like if the most attainable initiatives were implemented and what would, what it would look like if everything was able to be implemented over the next five years. And we can forecast that out, see what kind of impact each initiative would have, report back to the board to kinda make an assessment and ultimately take action on what would be implemented. And this would be a living document that we would look to update periodically, once or twice a year at least. So as results begin to come to fruition, we can see how the district's picture is changing and what steps need to be taken to either correct course, keep on course if things are improving, and what the district's options are periodically. So that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
I have a question. Regarding the, one of the reasons why we, the Moody's score and S and P scores were removed, you mentioned it had to do with untimely reporting. Now, this district, we've not been, we've been without a treasurer for several years. Were we excused from reporting just because of that? Or should we still have been doing our due diligence to ensure that it was done? Is there some excuse? Like, is there something that, how does that work?
There can be some flexibility given by the rating agencies, some leeway. However, ultimately, they do need up-to-date financial information to maintain their assessments.
Okay. And you also mentioned that there was basically overforecasting for expectations of revenue in several points in different years. What key factors drive coming up with those forecasted amounts that we could be so far off and none of us, sitting in these seats, no matter what committee, what position, no one knew? no matter what committee, what position, no one knew, none of us could know? Or none, or whatever, whatever, whatever. How could it possibly have gone? How could that have happened?
Of, of course, I wasn't in the rooms when the budgets were prepared.
It's a loaded question.
Certainly, a big portion of that was, was real property taxes not being remitted to the district by the city. There were also significant overestimations in state aid being received. So it may have, it could have been just an overreliance on fund balance, not taking into account actual results from prior years, instead maintaining budgeted numbers to forecast forward. That can lead to a continuation of those overestimations.
Can you speak to what the tax cap is? Because we took several years, we, we didn't raise taxes, it was a zero tax levy. Can you explain how the tax cap works? And what our school district basically failed to collect on when we needed to? And how that tax cap was impacted every year? Because I have an understanding, but I want to hear from somebody who's smarter than me.
So the tax cap is a state-imposed cap on how much the district can increase its property taxes on an annual basis. It's typically 2% or the level of inflation over the past year. So you are allowed to override that if a super majority of the district voters agree to it. But that can, but if you're within that tax cap, it only needs a simple majority to be passed, as any district budget would be. By not increasing property taxes over the years, it's a compounding effect. Because every year that, if you had increased, say, a little bit, the property taxes, you would have gained that increase on an annual basis and it would have compounded from there. So it was just revenue that, that wasn't ultimately collected, that may have been able to be.
How would you say that impacted our fund balance? This, we understand the city, the city not paying us a portion, a drop in the bucket to the considerable budget for the entire school year. You know, the 11 million is a drop compared to the entire, entire school budget for the year. But it's constantly been held up that that's the only reason why we're here. And I, and I'd like, I'd like an expert to explain, is that really the heaviest part of this? Is it an even bag? What is it really?
From our analysis, that was the biggest driver of the underfunded revenues. It's hard for me to say if that was the-
Was that for that?
For each year, for each year.
Okay.
For each of the last five or so years.
Right.
So it obviously wasn't the only contributing factor, but it did seem to be the most significant.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for this presentation. My first, I've got a couple of questions to try and just understand, understand this. I'm, I'm new to the Board of July, so I'm trying to get a grasp on this. The two things I'm most concerned about are this unassigned fund balance is 4.9 or so million dollars. That's a deficit in the unassigned fund balance. My understanding was that the assignments of the fund balance cannot cause a negative unassigned fund balance. Is, is that correct? And if that's true, how did that, how is it possible that that would, that would be the case? That we would have a negative 4.9 million? If it's, if it's structurally not something that you can do by the rules?
So the assignments are a little bit separate and apart from the unassigned.
Okay.
And it can get a little confusing with, with accounting rules of what's been reserved for specific purposes.
Okay.
That limits the district's flexibility and how those funds can be used. The unassigned is more so what, at this point with the deficit position, what the district owes itself and needs to pay itself because of either outstanding liabilities or debts that are owed, payments that are owed, that haven't been made and are, and are obligated by the district.
Got it. And so that will need to be corrected i- in this next budget, correct? It needs to be brought back to zero, I would think, at least?
Certainly as soon as possible.
Right. I mean, is there, is there a timeline on that, a state-imposed timeline? The State Comptroller is going to say, hey, listen, you can't, no, we could carry it, we could carry that negative balance?
Technically, yes, it just may impact the district's ability to pay its bills.
Got it. Okay. And the other thing is just the, so the overall, just sort of understanding the picture here. I get this piece about overestimating the revenues. And that's a combination of maybe thinking more state aid was going to be coming in than actually did and anticipating a closer to 100% of the tax revenue coming in, when really it was more like 97, 96, something like that. And that compounding over, over years. A real overreliance on the fund balance, drawing that down from 2015 until it got to negative. Declining enrollment due to things like charter schools, changing demographics, forces you then to carry more infrastructure than is needed. The infrastructure is old and expensive. So overall, the cost structure is a real expensive cost structure for the district. And then on top of that, most recently, I've been thinking about these pilots, these, the giveaways from the Industrial Development Agency, these 30-year pilots, which generally mean the developers get about a 50% break on average over 30 years. We've got a whole bunch of those out there, and we've got new ones coming online. Those, those make it tricky to predict the revenue as well. So am I on the right track in thinking that all, it's an confluence of these variables have come together and people weren't attending to all of these details over the last decade? And all of a sudden, wham, we're, we're in a real bind? Is that a fair assessment?
Absolutely. I, I mean, each of these issues on its own may not be debilitating to the district, but taken as a whole and really taking, taking a step back and look at them, at them together, unfortunately paints a pretty poor picture.
I don't know if I necessarily have a question or more so a comment, but I feel for you to be the bearer of this news, number one. But I also thank you for helping us to sound the alarm to our community, that we have to understand that based on the data, based on the numbers, based on the information that we have been hearing over the past couple of months, because I, like Trustee McDonough, have just recently come to the board, that although all of these town halls and all this information that our community unfortunately has been receiving in the last few weeks and months, it's unfortunate, but I think that we have to come to a realization that unfortunate as it may be, that in order for us to continue to educate the children in this community, that we are going to have to make some really, really, really tough, heartbreaking, heart-wrenching decisions. And it is unfortunate that we have come to this place, but it is real. And I just want to commend the staff, I want to commend the trustees that have been on this journey. And it's unfortunate that no one saw this coming before today. Some people may have seen it, but everyone wasn't on this board all at the same time. Some people had information, some people didn't have information, some people with shared information, some people were not shared information. But now that all of the covers have been removed and it has been unveiled, I think that we really need to search in ourselves and say, look, we know that we don't want to be here. We don't want to be here. I'm born and raised in this town, worked in this town, taught in this town, served in this town. And it is hard to hear the information that we heard tonight and that we've been hearing over the past couple of months. But I just ask and I appeal to our community to look at what is being recommended and that we, and I know that we don't want to lose our schools and we want the communities that we have seen. But unfortunately, we are going to have to make some tough choices in order to bring some of it back. So I just need to say that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're going to move on to, move on to our committee reports.
Committee reports. Trustee Kirwin, Audit Committee?
We don't, we don't have anything on the Audit Committee. As far as the Budget Committee, we just heard from Capital Market. So that covers the Budget Committee report. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Thank you. I was saying, as far as the Budget Committee report, we just heard from Capital Market. So that covers the Budget Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the Claims Committee, I have nothing. Facilities Committee is Trustee White on, on the line? Trustee White? What happened to Trustee White? Trustee White, do you have anything for the Facilities Committee? Oh, you just, so, you're muted, Trustee White.
Always forget to turn that off. We did have a HR meeting.
No, Facilities.
Excuse me?
Facilities. Do you have anything for Facilities? We're doing Facilities first.
Yes, we had a HR meeting.
No, Facilities. Okay.
Oh, you had Facilities. No, oh, no. I do want to say that the girls' bathrooms locks in Hamilton has been fixed. And I'm waiting for a report about the ice machines and the refrigeration. At, I'm going to put my glasses on. Benjamin Turner, have they been repaired or are we searching for parts? No one can hear me?
Yes, that's it?
Yes.
Okay. Anything that you needed to add? Trustee Mitchell for that report?
You know, the, the BTMS refrigerators have to be replaced, is my understanding. That was the last communication, six months ago. We're still just waiting for that to happen. We did follow up on it. Thank you, Trustee White, for bringing that out. And yes, of course, the locks at Hamilton on the girls' bathroom. When is our next Facilities meeting?
It'll be after the break.
After the-
After the holidays, it will be. I'll let you know.
Many, many months after. Okay.
When we have-
All right, so hopefully-
When it's scheduled.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Otherwise, then I'd have nothing.
Very little.
Okay. Family and Community Engagement, Trustee Middleton?
Good evening. There was a, we didn't have a parent engagement meeting. We had a subcommittee Parent Involvement Day meeting, which is a subcommittee of the Parent Engagement Meeting on December 12th. I wasn't able to attend that meeting. We had an I-Rate meeting scheduled at the same time. But discussed, that meeting was run by Dr. Gail White-Wallace, and she's the chair of the Parent Involvement Day. So during that meeting, she discussed the format of Parent Involvement Day, which is going to be held on Monday, February 10th. What was also discussed at that meeting were the options for what Parent Involvement Day will look like, whether it be a full day or a half day, how the history of Parent Involvement Day will be incorporated in. Additionally, there's going to be a planning team that's going to set up the workshops. And there'll be a follow-up meeting in January to finalize what Parent Involvement Day will look like. We have a parent engagement meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 6:00 on December 19th, but this may have to be rescheduled due to several conflicts, several concerts, several events going on that night. So we may have to reschedule our full Parent Engagement Committee meeting in January.
Thank you, Dr. Doggett. Human Resources, Trustee White?
Megan?
Yes.
We did have a HR meeting this month. We talked mainly about the reorg and not too much we can say until we get a definite option that we're definitely going to use and how we will be dividing teachers, psychologists, and the bulk of the staff, how they will be transferred around. But it's really nothing much to say. I know we have FMLA, we had about five people on FMLA this month. And basically, that's it.
Okay. Trustee McDonough, IDA.
Okay.
Excuse me?
Thank you, Trustee White.
Yeah, so the IDA, the Industrial Development Agency, met on the 13th of December. And I'm going to give you a brief on that. And I think we're, as we hear, it's, it's more and more important to understand what, what's at stake here when, when we're looking at these pilots. The 115 South McQuestion pilot I mentioned was approved. In fact, they had a groundbreaking ceremony today. Strangely, the, the mayor who chairs the IDA did not mention it at the meeting, that there was a groundbreaking that tells you how proud they are of this project, that it was not even mentioned. As I told you last time, the, the minimum gap in funding that will come to the student, come to the district from the students in there is about $4.6 million. It's more likely to be more because they underestimated the students in that building. They use a multiplier of .15, which means 15 kids per 100 units. It's probably going to be quite a bit more than that. The multiplier is probably more like .22. So that's a difference of across 315 units, you know, whatever, 20 kids. Over 30 years, that's, that adds up to a lot of money. So that's 115 McQueston, that's done. The next project is Q West. I think I mentioned that that one came before. That's 228 units. These are all below market rate. And by the way, the information on 115 McQueston is up on the website. Just be warned, it says affordable end market rate, that's incorrect. There are no market rate apartments in 115 South McQueston. The, the closest you get are a few units at 90%. The average is 60% of the area median income. Q West is 228 units. That project showed a funding gap of about 2.9 million. At the meeting, the developer offered an additional million dollars to the school district as a lump sum payment upfront when construction starts. They anticipate that to be next June. So that means they bumped that from a million to 2 million. And on the back end, in years 16 through 30, they doubled that offer to about 1.1 million. If you bring that to today's dollars, it drops to maybe a little bit under a million. So still, the funding gap there is about 1.5 million. But that's a lot less than what 115 McQueston was. I think going forward, there are at least three more projects almost identical to these. They're all at about 60% AMI. This is, this is a, I see it now, it's a blueprint that these for-profit housing developers use. They go through the planning process, they get linked in with the community, they hang around for a couple of years, they get all the approvals, then they go to the IDA. That's where they make their money. They make their money there. And these projects are all financed by us. It's all financed with public debt. They put very, very little of their own money in. And then typically, we'll see what happens after they get paid all their money. They get all their money paid in the first 15 years. So my concern is what do they do after they don't have a profit motive anymore? So I think going forward, we should probably talk about, you know, we don't have a vote there, but how to magnify this important topic. This costs our school district literally millions of dollars. There are at least 1,000 units already out there and there's 1,000 units coming. So I think we need to pay very close attention to this and just keep talking about it. Okay?
Thank you so much, Trustee McDonough. Insurance Committee, Trustee Kirwin, was there any report?
No, don't have any report.
Policy, the Policy Committee met last week. We decided on a policy that Rice Russell is going to read the first reading of tonight. Trustee Russell, I mean, Trustee Russell. You don't want that job? You can't do it now? Oh. Oh, because we're in committee meetings. I'm sorry. Well, we're going to have that first reading tonight. Okay, okay. Safety and Security, she stepped away, is she? Okay. Special Education, there's no meeting. Technology, Trustee Maribel?
We'll be meeting in January. Thank you.
And Wellness?
Did we skip Security?
She's not here.
We had, we did have a meeting with Security, with the Security Team. Mr. Remundy was there with us. We didn't get to cover much, but I think we're going to cover more at the next one. All right. It's kind of, kind of related to Security. The Building Condition Survey you said was on the district site. Where?
Under the Building Condition Survey.
Yeah, under the reorg.
Yeah, where?
Under the reorg.
Are you back to Facilities, or you jumped over Wellness? You don't have a Wellness? No, well, I.
No, no, I'm asking about the BCS report because it does relate to Security to some extent. That's what I was asking.
I caught the dots, yes. So it's under the reorganization? Nah, it's filed. It's under the reorganization section of the website. If you go to Why We Need to Make a Change Now, you'll find it.
The Building Condition Survey?
The Building, so what it is, is the entire survey's 176 pages. That is a streamlined version identifying what Priority 1, 2, 3, and 4 is. It shows each building, how much the total cost of each priority. It's categorized electrical, infrastructure, roofing, windows, plumbing. So it really breaks down the cost in a digestible form to give anyone who wants to see the current state of the buildings.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So also Wellness Committee met, and it was a good meeting. We went with Aramark, who was our first food service company. We discussed moldy pancakes and things like that, and raw meat, and all these other different things, and how they're going to move, and how they've been moving. We got some coverage on some new tactics that they're using to make sure that we're state and audit ready, and we should always understand it. Money comes from the state that covers the food. The money comes from the state that covers these refrigerators to be replaced. Money comes from the state for everything. It's called cafeteria fund or the C fund. The money comes from the state to cover all those things, including payment to Aramark. So Aramark is paid from the state as well as money's collected. All of it's collected through the school district, and Aramark is paid from there. So it's imperative that they do their best to treat and service our children at the utmost. So the meeting we had was, it gave good indicators that that's the direction they're moving. They're starting to move. So we're looking forward to meeting with them more on a monthly basis. We discussed at that meeting. We'd like Dr. Smith to always to be there. It's always good to have her there. But we learned about state readiness for audits, to make sure that we're ready in case we're audited on production records and things like that. Measures are taken to make sure that the Aramark employers are trained and supervised properly the way they should be, the way they should be. So overall, it was a good meeting, and I hope that at the next month's meeting, we'll have some sort of information more that we can share for my committee report on it.
Thank you, Trustee Mitchell. Trustee Njenga, did you have anything else to add to the Security? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. All right, so that ends the committee reports and follow-up on old business. Questions from the December 3 regular board meeting. There was a question as to what is going on with the district's view on the New York State proposal for regionalization. There's nothing on the website. The answer is, we are in the beginning stages of this discussion. Districts are not required to participate. We will update the community in the future. So now we can move on to the resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the end, that's the end of follow-ups? Is that really the end of follow-ups? There's no other questions that were from the prior meetings that were?
Most people make statements. They don't ask questions.
What I'm talking about, no, just for the actual questions, not the statements. Are we not going to? From the last meeting or the one before that, we're not doing?
The question.
That was the only one?
There was a teacher that came that they answered that question, if that's what you refer to.
No, I'm not talking about, no, there were several parents and otherwise who asked questions that I didn't hear any answers today. But, okay, well, we'll talk offline. We'll talk offline.
Okay, so we're going to the resolutions?
Can I have a motion for 5.1, Human Resources 117A certified?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources 117B classified?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor? Oppose? Abstain?
I don't think Wanda's sound is on.
Oh. Oh, she's on mute.
Wanda, can you turn your, unmute yourself?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Again.
Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 5.3, Request for a Leave of Absence?
Motion.
Second.
Who was second? That was Trustee McDonough? Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 6.1, Authorization to Hire Staff at the Mount Vernon Aquatic Facility, June to Spring 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 7.1, Approval of Pupil Personnel Services, Memorandum Number 11, dated December 17, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.1, Approved General Funds Transfer, Purchase Order Increases, dated December 17, 2024?
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Oppose? That was? What happened? Oh, she, okay.
I think she's got a 30-second delay.
Okay. Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.2, Approved Treasurer's Report, dated July through October 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 8.3, Approved the Internal Claims Auditor's Report, dated July through October 2024?
Motion. Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.1, Authorization to Enter into a Letter of Agreement with Hazard Young, Attia Associates?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.2, First Reading of Policy 7300.60, Amendment to the Code of Conduct, Student Searches and Interrogations? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Second, okay, I got you, Mitchell. Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question.
Can we just get a simple understanding how this amendment addresses the concerns of the public and the parents regarding the pat downs that were happening?
Sure, once I read it, then we'll go to that.
Okay, okay. Questions, concerns, discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? You abstaining from the reading? Yeah, okay.
Was it for the reading?
It's for the reading, yeah.
No, the reading?
Yeah. We're not going to vote on it tonight. We're just reading. Okay. Okay, and motion carries. You can, go ahead, Mr. Russell.
So just, so we all understand, so there may be, so that we can clear up any misunderstandings. What happens is, this is the first reading, and then after the first reading, board members will have a chance to, those who are not on the Policy Committee will have a chance to review this amendment, and then either, one, we can decide to have a second reading, or bypass that, and then there will be a vote at some later date. And that's when you can vote abstain, yea, or nay. To that end, today is just first reading. So for the public, those that are out there that may not remember this, even though it was highly visible in the community, this Amendment to the Code of Conduct came from the physical searches that were conducted at STEAM Academy. And there was questions as to whether or not that was in line with the Code of Conduct. And there was, I guess, concerns that tabled, one, students' civil rights, Fourth Amendment rights, versus the district's liability financially if something were to happen, because we are in charge of the care of kids. So based upon that, the Policy Committee, which is headed by myself, Trustee Middleton, Trustee Njenga, Trustee Kirwin, Trustee Saunders, and Dr. Kelly, I want to say thank you for your input, and thank you for being a checks and balances to anything that I drafted that you checked and said, well, let's think about it differently. So now, this is time for the reading. So 7300.60 Amendment for Code of Conduct starts. Now, this document was once a one-page document. Now it is a three and a half page document. I tried to cover as much ground as possible. I think policies and Code of Conducts are documents that should be revisited based upon circumstances. So it says, 7300.60 Amendment to the Code of Conduct, Student Searches and Interrogations. The Board of Education is committed to ensuring that atmosphere on school property and school functions that is safe and orderly. To achieve this kind of environment, any school official authorized to impose disciplinary consequences on a student may question a student about an alleged violation of law or district code of conduct. Students are not entitled to any Miranda-type warnings before being questioned by school officials, nor are school officials required to contact students' parents, guardians, before questioning the student. However, school officials will tell all students why they are being questioned. We move to physical pat-down searches. The Board authorizes the superintendent of schools or their designees, building principals or their designees, assistant principals, the school nurse, district security officials to conduct searches of students and their belongings. Before searching a student, the authorized school official must inquire about the student's possession of physical evidence which violates the district code of conduct. Such searches may generally only be performed when the authorized school official has reasonable suspicion to believe that the search will yield evidence of a violation of law or the district code of conduct. Defining reasonable suspicion. Reasonable suspicion is defined as follows. One, Metal Detector Alert or X-Ray Machine Alert. Metal detector alerts the superintendent of schools or their designee, building principals or their designee, assistant principals, the school nurse, the district security officials that a metallic item is on a student's person. Two, Handheld Wand Alerts. A handheld wand alerts the superintendent of schools or their designee, building principal or their designee, assistant principal, the school nurse, or district security officials to the presence of a metallic item on the student's person. So those are grounds for which, if those things were to ring, you would go into another stage, and we'll get to that on the next page. Reliable informant is another grounds for reasonable suspicion. So what is a reliable informant or information? Reliable information is provided to the superintendent of schools or their designee, building principal or their designee, assistant principal, the school nurse, the district security office, from a reliable informant indicating that a student has prohibited items such as a weapon or drugs, possessing, consuming, selling, distributing, or exchanging alcoholic beverages or illegal substances, or being under the influence of either illegal substances, including but not limited to inhalants, edibles, cocaine, LSD, PCP, ephedrine, synthetic cannabinoids, heroin, steroids, vaping, look-alike drugs, and any substance commonly referred to as designer drugs, including illegal narcotics, unprescribed medication marijuana, vape devices, or alcohol. This list is not exhaustive of illicit drugs. For personal observation, the superintendent of school or their designee, building principal or their designee, assistant principal, the school nurse, or the district security officials personally observe the student concealing a weapon, metallic or non-metallic, or drugs on their person, regardless of whether a metal detector, X-Ray machine, handheld wand alerts occurs. Reliable informants is defined as, it may include students, volunteers, bystanders, or individuals with a verified track record of providing accurate information. Information from an informant may also be reliable if corroborated by another source, or if a student provides a statement against their own interest. And what is a statement against their own interest? A student says, I have this item on me when questioned. A verified track record is not mandatory to be considered a reliable informant. That means that you do not have to have a list of students that say they gave information before to believe a student for the first time. Generally, individuals who have previously provided inaccurate information will not be deemed reliable. Physical search and pat-down protocol. All searches must be conducted to respect the student's dignity and privacy while ensuring the safety of the school community. Voluntary disclosure. The student can voluntarily retrieve or reveal the items in question before conducting a physical search. So this is more to your question, Trustee Mitchell. So the procedure would be, you come through the metal detector or your handheld wand. If something were to go off, if something were to ring, the first stage is to say, student A, do you have something on you? That's what we call either a self-search or a chance for someone to give an admission against their own interests so the other students could be safe. Metal detector scan. After retrieval or voluntary disclosure of the students, must pass through a metal detector and or undergo a scan with a handheld wand. That means after the student is questioned, asked to reveal whatever's in their pocket, whatever they may have, whatever is ringing, they then still go through the metal detector or still his wand. And if something rings again, then you proceed to the physical search. Pat-down or physical search. If the metal detector or wand signals the presence of an item, an unauthorized school official may conduct a pat-down. So it's after all those matrices or all those scenarios that then the pat-down comes into play. Guiding principles. Searches should only be conducted when necessary and is sensitive to the student's dignity. All searches should be conducted in a manner that respects the dignity and privacy of the student while ensuring the safety and the well-being of all individuals within the school environment. Authorized personnel must adhere to this policy to ensure compliance with legal and ethical standards. Whenever practical, searches will be conducted in the privacy of administrative offices, and students will be present when their possessions are being searched. Searches will be limited to the extent necessary to locate the evidence source. Protocol for schools or events without metal detectors or handheld wands. Sometimes you go to an event at a school, there is no metal detector, there is no wand. It may be a basketball game, it may be a softball game, it may be an after-school program. In the absence of metal detectors or hand wands, the following protocol must be followed. Students self-search, superintendent of schools or their designee, building principals or their designee, assistant principals, school nurses, district security officers will instruct the student to perform a self-search. Empty your pockets, empty everything around you. Empty your pockets, empty everything around you, go in your back pockets, take out what's there. The student must remove all items from their person, including pockets, bags, or any concealed items. Step two, Pat Down Search. Once the self-search is completed, the superintendent of schools or their designee, building principals or their designee, assistant principal, school nurse, or district security officers or officials will perform a pat down search of the student. These procedures apply specifically when metal detectors or handheld wands are unavailable. This policy underscores the district's commitment to creating safe environment while safeguarding the rights and well-being of all students. So that is the first reading, and is always up for discussion in executive session.
Can I have a motion for 10.1, to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, the financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on a pending matter? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, we are in...
We will not be returning.
Executive session.
Will not be returning. Everyone have a nice holiday.